Agenda.
So.
A second. I'll say good. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are you men? Motion passes. Do I have a motion to approve the consent items as listed? A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is it possible we can take the donation out of the consent agenda and move it to when we have discussion on the resolution? So we can discuss it, answer it, have questions all at the same time?
Are you not going to accept it?
Oh, probably will accept it.
Do you want to leave it here and have it the discussion now?
Yeah, that'd be good. But but it happens to be with the, you know, the Republican contact later on, so I don't know if we want to get out of order.
And we're just, we're just accepting this.
Yeah.
Still, when we come back here, we could have the discussion, but we're just accepting it.
Well, if I don't get the answers I like to the resolution, then or none of us to again, to one person, it's not a big deal. And all of a sudden, you know, three of us decide, yeah, I brought up some good points. And we decided maybe we want more information. Then we've got to accept a donation, but we're not quite ready to do something. So that's why I suggest maybe we discuss it also. You know, they just just move the acceptance of the donation down to the time when we talk about the resolution. Then we'll talk about the resolution first and then accept the donation.
Can we do that after we've approved the agenda?
We've already approved it.
I know.
Now's the time of the consent.
Right. I'm just wondering if that should have been moved during the discussion part of approving agenda.
But there's probably more like an adjustment.
Yeah, it should have been moved.
It would have been an adjustment to the action.
Okay. Well, thanks for everything. Appreciate.
We'll look forward to the discussion. All right. The consent items have been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Superintendent comments?
Just want to thank all our schools for fantastic Veterans Day assemblies. Great work continues to happen. We just hope that everybody takes some time for the upcoming break and just take some rest. And it's pushing really hard right now, so. That's our, that's my wish for Thanksgiving is that people just take a break. Enjoy their family.
Thank you. Board member comments? Someone like to start? Sure. Can I kick us off?
First. Just lots of good work happening in the district. I'm sure that everybody's looking forward to a break here next week. Been doing a lot of work with our Equity Advisory Council, who has now moved to breakout groups to actually talk about how we handle discipline in the school, how do we handle bias training, things like that. And so as we've gone into those breakout groups, it's been really great to see the strategic plan moving into the next thing, which is how do we actually implement it in the district and have better outcomes for all our students.
That. I don't have too much to add to to this portion of the agenda, but I do want to say that the the homecoming parade was a lot of fun. I just have to say, first time I've ever been in an army vehicle and I was very grateful to have a ladder. I still needed help to do that. It was huge, but it was a lovely addition to the parade considering what was happening downtown, fire and kudos to the city of Sumner and all of the staff and students at the high school were able to sort of reconfigure the route and make it as joyous as it could be. So it was a joy to see that.
Good job. I'm going to pass on my.
I really don't have anything else. Hey, problem with Congress tomorrow. I'm sure I'll have some comments. Come back.
I'm good. Thank you. Paul.
Yeah. Along with the advisory committees, it's good to have. I attend the safety advisory committee and they're going to break out into three subgroups. And I wasn't able to go this last time, but hopefully my goal is to attend many of the subgroups as I can, so we can come back and report to you guys some of the kind of the cool suggestions that they have and even maybe some of the tough topics that they're that they're discussing, so. That's it for much of my good quarter. I did go to both, uh, home kind of parades. My hope is that over, over time, the Bonnie Lake Parade will have more traditions built in around it so that it can rival the Summer Parade, which must have been 10 times as large as far as community turnout and you know, just people in the parade. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Great. Uh, that brings us to policy matters. This is the first reading folder. See this listed. As well as the procedures in the agenda. You all have links to that. You can view those. At your leisure. Business matters for information, you have a budget status report included in your packet. And that brings us to action item resolution oh four twenty two twenty three settlement agreement relating to stormwater discharge from Crestwood Elementary School. The district administration recommends the board adopt resolution number oh four twenty two twenty three, the settlement agreement with associated stormwater defense between the district and Anatoly and Ina Savanen relating to stormwater discharge from Crestwood Elementary School. Do I have a motion to approve? A second? Any discussion?
Otherwise, settlement agree.
Yeah. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Are you men? Motion passes. Resolution oh five twenty two twenty three playground equipment installation. The recommendation is that the administration recommends that the board adopt resolution number oh five twenty two twenty three for $60,000 to transfer from the general fund to the capital projects fund in twenty twenty two twenty three for playground equipment installation. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I?
Second.
Discussion?
Well, I already got some of my questions answered earlier and that, but I thought this was a good time to have a discussion. Mostly because, so one of the questions I had, I got answered once, is the $60,000 transfer, does that include the $29,000? It's almost, we'll just say $30,000. It's just a couple of days shy of $30,000 for the donation from the PTA of Emerald Hills. So I asked, does the $60,000 transfer include the $30,000 so that it's only really $30,000 from the general fund? And the answer was no, it's sixty. So hopefully the whole project would cost, well, ninety thousand, thirty of it, third of it would be contributed by the PTA, which is super generous.
Amazing.
It is. Uh, we get a lot of PTA support because it's good. So I don't want this conversation, anyone to think that that's what this is about, because we like. But, uh, you know, it makes me think you ever got Liberty and Crestwood and some of these other schools are much older than Emerald Hills, which just pretty much got done. Uh, and now we're talking about a new playground equipment for them. And I mean, Daffodil Elementary shot new playground equipment and their PTA, I think, came up with $34,000 and some other fundraising. But I think it was real minimal for the install because they had community volunteers kind of come out and help install out there at Capital. So, you know, here, I'm thinking of the precedent that we're setting where we're letting PTAs know that, hey, you just come up with about $30,000. Well, district will match it with sixty and we'll roll money over and every, you know, every five years, you know, these schools are getting new, new playground. I don't, I mean, certainly they have to be replaced at some point. But I would hate for schools to begin to think that that's the norm when we have a rather new school with rather new playground equipment, that we have older ones that have much older playground. Uh, and if I was a PTA over in, say, Crestwood or Liberty Ridge, I might start thinking, hey, what's good for Emerald Hills might be good for us. So that's what I throw out for discussion. Maybe the district has thought about this, that if all the schools did it, we already know we're basically a quarter million dollars. We're prepared to, uh, you know, do that. If we are, fine. If not, maybe we should think about it a little more before we set the precedent. This is, this is how you get new playground equipment. So.
Can I answer that, please?
So really, the long-term strategy here needs to be that the district takes responsibility for playgrounds and the PTAs aren't raising thirty, forty thousand dollars to then still not have enough to install playgrounds, because playgrounds become an issue really of equity. Schools that can raise fifty, sixty thousand dollars don't have any trouble getting the playgrounds. Schools that can barely raise seven or ten thousand dollars do. So if we really believe in making sure that we eliminate barriers for all children, it also includes the playground. So the long-term strategy is to get it on a replacement cycle, just like we do other items that require maintenance and that the district owns the cost so that PTAs can focus their energy on raising money for other things other than a cost that that truly should be covered by the district. I mean, I'm grateful that Emerald Hills raised this money and that we can help them. We're prepared to help other PTAs in the short term. But the long-term, the strategy and the goal is to put playgrounds on a replacement cycle and take PTA out of the playground business.
I like that spread. I see everybody else shaving their head too, so that, if that's reassuring, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Uh, thank you very much. So the recommendation has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Are you men? Motion passes. Uh, the administration recommended the board adopt resolution number oh six twenty two twenty three for out of endorsement assignment waiver. Do I hear a motion to approve? Second?
I'll say.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I'll say for the last couple of years, HR has worked very hard to keep this list to bare bones minimum. There was four teachers on here this time. I'm very proud. Thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you, Paul. Any other discussion? Motion that from second then. All of you in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And then motion passes. All right. For information, uh, we have a presentation from our capital projects and facilities manager, Marina Tumay. Will present current information regarding current projects.
Okay. Board Director, Superintendent Kent, thank you. I apologize for my voice. It's the best it's been in a couple of weeks. So when I get to the video, I might not talk.
You guys hear the background?
Okay. Great. Everyone gets to hear my rusty voice. Okay. We've made an incredible amount of progress and since last presentation that we've had, it's very been a very exciting couple of months. And there's a lot more excitement to come, but I'm really proud to present where we are right now. Um, at Mountain View, it was a fun start to the school year. Very busy. A lot of activity happened on Labor Day weekend. I've got a couple of pictures for you. One of these is of the the inside of the building facing the vestibule. So we have that security vestibule in place now at Mountain View. Um, and on the right, that's our auxiliary gym and the changes in that gym are very subtle, but they're huge. I just want to share them with you. Uh, we have a new opera ball partition because that old one was past its useful life, had a lot of issues. We have a new map hoist. Uh, that's another piece that was no longer functioning, so everyone is really excited about the new map hoist. You'll also see all new basketball standards. The padding below the basketball hoops and the acoustical wall panels in the auxiliary gym and in the commons. Really just updates and freshens the local place. Um, I love pictures of people doing what they're supposed to be doing in a new space, enjoying it. This is a full new portion of the commons on a typical day with beautiful sunlight filtering into the space. And the second picture shows you that plaza outside the commons. Again, we have nice tables out there. So this was right after school when there's the homework enhancement going on, kids waiting for later buses. And you just had a full active green site, just a beautiful space for kids on a nice fall day. Couple of the other places, one other place that we touched was the library and I wish I could blow this up for you. But we updated the furniture in the library so that we have more functional furniture. It's easier to move around. It's easier to use for classroom use or for small group breakouts. We had, we're able to have a little fun with some very durable, washable, soft furnishings that you see in front of the monitor. So it just creates new spaces for kids to spend time with books, with technology, with small groups and learning, and it just really added to the space. We were able to take out the old transaction station and open up more space in that library. So it's more spacious, better use of the space. We're really enjoying that. And that last picture is one of the classrooms in our new addition. So just some really great additions to the Mountain View campus. Summer High School is a beautiful site. I know we almost take it for granted, believe it or not, right now with it right across the street. The changes happen every single day. Uh, since these pictures were taken, now the fencing is in on the, oops, I should not have done that. The fencing is in, uh, for the student plaza outside the commons. Uh, there more side work has been going on, topsoil being delivered, little baby grass seedlings sprouting up. Um, the other picture was really fun. It comes up on the roof. They took the maintenance guys on a little bit of a tour of the mechanical spaces, some of the spaces in the building. And so from that angle, you can see the cover over the new entrance to the phase one building. And it's hard to make out that there is a good visual of that canopy that goes from the new building to the main building. These are a couple of spaces that are really common at the ends of the student hallways on each level. We have these great, um, student breakout rooms that you will have, you know, our touchscreen monitors will have furnishings in there so they can be used for meeting space, for breakout space, for after-school project space, whatever seems to work for the building. And then the smaller picture below shows, uh, what it looks like going towards stairway at the end of the hallway. And you can see, you know, one of the really cool purple in the glass. But that view at the end of those hallways is amazing when the sun is out. You can see the mountains so clearly and Cassie and I have just been debating about putting some kind of furnishings down there because we're afraid people are just going to want to sit there and go gaga around this, which isn't very good for class time, but I could do it. It's beautiful. Another beautiful thing in the building are these science labs. The science labs are adequately equipped and well-equipped with the few hoods that you see with space for lab space. Um, I don't have a picture here of like the demonstration table, the prep rooms, but we really do have incredibly amazing science labs in this building. Very excited to see the kids begin to enjoy those spaces. And then probably the secondary to the library, the most inspiring space is the commons. Um, you can see in this picture on the left, the cloud structures going in in the commons up above. These help with acoustics. Um, they're just a really cool visual, but they, they serve a purpose. Um, we'll have big fans that will help to keep the air circulating in the space, so it's well-modulated and and good for comfort. And then the picture on the right, there's that funky board with the red stripe on it that kind of looks like a strange stock market reading or something. That actually is a structure that will hold a video monitor system that will be there in the commons. And this will be a really great enhancement to that space. Great for activities, for presentations, for all sorts of things. This really is going to be a beautiful space. And below that, you can see into the kitchen area with the purple, with the cutlery in shades of gold on the sidewalls. Again, a very beautiful space. Okay, I'm going to show the video next. And I don't, I think the sound will play, so I'm going to rest my voice for just a minute. But be prepared, looking at it, to see, you know, some of the progress on the sites and the changes and the real visual look of our sites and our building. And if you have questions about them, think about what your questions might be and I will answer that. Yeah. Yes. So any questions about what's going on at either of the sites?
I thought it was very cool to see the value and to see the path that the people have taken. I need to drop kids off.
Yeah, those two lanes of traffic, uh, when they're, when people are following the direction, really make an incredible amount of difference. We've had a great amount of positive comments about those changes.
Do you have any sense from when we will be able to go in and take a look? At least, you know, we can with Mountain View, probably.
Certainly, yes.
But.
Well, I would say that in the early part of the new year, I'd be, would love to, to some touring of the building, yes.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, I can see it every day. I know you do. I mean, in my office, yes. Right. Going inside is amazing. I will say that carpeting is in and on the third floor classrooms and in most of the spaces, uh, we're kind of working from the top down with carpeting. Uh, the kitchen flooring is complete, the flooring in the student store is complete. You know, walls coverings are in, lighting is in. Obviously, you can see that the building has permanent power now and classrooms are lit. This past week, PSE installed side lighting, so it'll be interesting to see how people react to those new bulb lights that we have on Wood and on Mason Street. So big changes there. We have a lot of other projects that we are doing in the district that I haven't highlighted this month. But I think when we do our next presentation, I'll have a lot more to share on those. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
You know, this school looks fantastic and it's gonna, when the whole project is done, it'll be awesome. At what point in time, you know, like have those posters up, right? Big billboard.
Oh, yeah.
Is there any time frame when you might put like the whole project on there? You know, I don't know why we don't have it so young, like, you know, what is, what the thing is in the future. And one of them, I'm like a big one that shows the master plan. So when people drive by, they see. It's not, you know, sure, you can look it up on computer, but when people drive by and you could see that, well, this is what the final project is going to look like. Why wouldn't you want to do that where, so when that time comes and we have to go out? We're, I don't see what the future would be. I don't.
Well, signage on a property is governed by municipal coach and so. It doesn't quite work that way. I wish it did. The signage that we have on the site that's related to the project is specifically that. It's related to the project and specific notice requirements relating to the project. You know, when the project is complete, that stuff all has to go away and we don't just necessarily get to replace it. That being said, if we are blessed to pass a bond and we begin the process to build out that master plan, you bet L and I will be out there hammering the host of the Grand Ole St. will be so insane.
Yeah.
See.
Well. You know, the best, the best advertisement for promotion for that master plan is that building right there. I mean, that's something tangible that everyone can see in living color, full size and beautiful. And I hope that that conveys the type of work that's gone into the master plan and gives people a hint of what can be to come.
You show the books coming every day?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
For exciting stuff. Thank you very much. There's there are two reports for your information included in your packet, uh, one being the ALE and online learning board report and the November twenty twenty two change order report. At this time, we're moving to audience comments.
The board recognizes the value of public comment on education issues and the importance involved with members of the public in its meetings. Comments from the public are taken under board advisement and may or may not be used to action in future meetings. Topics including charges or complaints against employees, employment or dismissal of personnel, acquisition of real estate, lawyer-client relationships, campaigning and parameters for negotiation should not be discussed in audience comments. Other information, questions, or problems can usually be addressed by district staff. The audience comment period will end when all speakers who have signed up to speak have entered. We ask that everyone can hear and understand these guidelines. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or any other form of support or non-support. The board will not respond to comments, but will take them under advisement. Speakers should be courteous and professional. Please refrain from using profanity, vulgar language, threatening or defamatory comments. As a reminder, individuals are not permitted to name a specific staff member, board member, or student during public comments. Tell you to do so may result in the board president or designated interrupting or ending the comment. The audience comment process is as follows. The speakers who have signed up will be heard. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name. Please address your comments to the school board as a whole. Individuals have three minutes to speak. I will signal speakers when one minute remains. Our only audience comment for this evening. Our only audience comment for this evening is Sunny Tobbard. Sunny? That concludes our audience call.
Thank you. All right, that moves us toward board discussion. Anybody have anything they'd like to discuss?
This comment that we got the memo from Lori earlier this week about the looking in for the next gen timeline on there of what they're going to look at as far as what we discussed last week, the possible sponsorship of some of the buildings that might be used, hopefully, for maintenance and repairs of our buildings, so that we don't always have to run around shaking the cushions and trying to find money for those needed things. So I appreciate the memo, it was well done. Didn't even seem like it was a full year, it was more like about 10 months. It was trying to get ready to have a decision and something to us by the start of next school year. So.
Well, pending that the board.
Right. It's up for us to look at, anyway. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other discussion items?
Just have kind of an announcement. It looks like the community dinner at Summer High School is December 10th. Saturday. Yep. Okay, so I'm hoping that board members can come sort of pass out food or whatever. It's a great opportunity. It's probably, I think, maybe the 23rd year. Probably about 23 years. How old are you now? Okay, she could. How old is your son?
He's 24.
Okay, you're pregnant when we talked about it.
Okay, so maybe I'm.
All right. Any other discussion? Okay. And the next board meeting has been scheduled for Wednesday, December 14th. It will begin at 6:00 p.m. here in the central office boardroom. That's it for this evening. Thank you for joining us. And happy.